Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone here to the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. The city has returned to hybrid public meetings pursuant to AB 361, which allows for the deviation from teleconference rules required by Ralph M. Brown Act. Residents now have the option to attend the meeting in person or participate remotely. To participate remotely, residents can livestream the meeting at prcity.com/youtube, or call in the phone number 805-865-7276 to provide public comment via the phone. The phone line will be open just prior to the start of the meeting and remain open throughout the meeting to ensure opportunity for the public to comment on each item heard by the commission. Written public comments can be submitted via email, planning@prcity.com. Those received prior to 12 noon on the day of the meeting to be posted on the city's website as an addendum to the agenda. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item by number or name. Planning Commission meetings will be livestreamed during the meeting and available play later on YouTube, again by accessing prcity.com/youtube. As of this point in time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting, and let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) (Pledge of Allegiance) Commissioner Marlowe?
Present.
Commissioner Kovarubius?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Neal? Commissioner Kogler? Chairperson Christensen?
Present.
So, the record will reflect that Neal is, and Kogler are both absent tonight.
Okay, I think...
Marcy Reynoso and Ashley Peterson, Administrative Assistance.
Warren Frase, Community Development Director. And tonight, I'd like to introduce our new staff member, which is Dante Pecanino. He's a graduate from Cal Poly. He's been an engineer locally since 2018, and he and his wife recently moved to the city of Paso Robles. So Dante, you want to come up and say hi real quick? Dante's going to be our Senior Development Review Engineer, so he'll be working with the city engineer to get all the projects ready for Planning Commission.
Nice to meet you all.
Welcome, Dante Gomastanks.
Sorry, they're having some technical difficulties on YouTube.
Mr. Chair, we're ready to go.
Thank you. All right, I think we'll take staff's presentation.
Yes, be happy to. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this is the Covella project. As you mentioned, it's a development plan, a request for oak tree removals, a tentative, it's actually a tentative tract map, and a development plan with a conditional use permit. So this project is, it has an address off of Union Road, but it is at the corner of Ardmore Road, and where Ardmore makes a 90-degree and goes down to Union Road. So we are in a C3-zoned area. It is east of Golden Hill Road and south of Union Road. So this is a project for, and I'll switch back here. So this pink box area is the project site. When you look at this orientation of the site plan, north would be to the right. So the proposal is for develop this whole site. This site right here is an existing parcel, and there would be the larger building, 125,000 square foot building one. The other portion of the site is one property, but this is where the subdivision is being proposed, so there'd be a property line that comes in where buildings four and six would be on one parcel, and buildings two, three, and five would be on a separate parcel. And this is the parcel map. So this is existing Lot 13, nothing's changing with that lot. This is the proposed warehouse building, and then this would be parcel A and parcel B. There are a number of oak trees on the site, quite large oak trees. If you've been out to the site and looked from the road, you can see the trees. There are eight trees circled in green here. The request is to remove six of the eight, keeping Tree 10 and Tree 13. So when you go back to the site plan, this is Tree 13 and Tree 10. As you can see, that the project was designed around those trees. Those two trees are the best trees of the eight. The other eight have some health issues, some cavities, different things going on. We do have the arborist here tonight if the Planning Commission has questions on those. However, over a year ago, we were out on site at least two, I think more, three times looking at the oak trees and trying to come up with ways to just verify that the request to remove the six was justified. That's what's being proposed tonight, and we can provide more information on that. But staff's comfortable with the request and the arborist's recommendations that those So this is indicating, this chart to the left, that's showing that Lot 13 would have Building One. Building One is 125,000 square feet with an office and warehouse use. Lot Six, proposed parcel A, would have Buildings Two, Three, and Five with those square footages, and those would be more retail, wine-making, storage-type uses. Same with parcel B. So those are, there aren't any specific users. The applicant's will be making a presentation that can get in more into specific uses and if they have specific users or not, but the zoning and what's being proposed is a mix of retail, wine-making, storage, and manufacturing, with Building One being a large warehouse. These are some of the perspectives the architect provided on the buildings, can kind of get an idea of the kind of the look, the colors, the materials. This is Building One, the larger warehouse on Lot 13. And then this gets into the landscaping and the fencing. Real quick here, I think the main point to look at here is the southern boundary. So when we get back, when I was talking a little bit about the vicinity map, all the C3-zone properties south of Union Road and east of Golden Hill Road, the zoning code requires a conditional use permit to be required. Let me go back to that vicinity map. The reason, there's a few reasons for the conditional use permit and what the conditional use permit is trying to achieve. One is that, and you can, all of these properties south of Ardmore, back up to residential zone property, and there's actually some residences on Gilia just to the south. South of this site is Chandler Ranch, or what's considered North Chandler Ranch. So there isn't any development proposed at this time. At some point in the future, we'll get a request for a specific plan, similar to what we've gone through with the Beechwood and with the South Chandler, an Olson-specific plan, but at this point, there are nothing, there's no plans in the works for North Chandler. However, it does have a zoning of a residential zone. So we know that has a residential zone. We're not sure what a specific plan in the future would propose, but we anticipate that this would still remain some type of residential use. So this zoning code requirement is, wants the Planning Commission, when reviewing the project, to pay attention of this boundary between these properties that is owned commercial, light, industrial, up against these residential. So the requirement is, one, that a solid masonry wall be constructed along the southern boundary, which this project is doing, and that a minimum of a 10-foot landscape buffer be provided along here, which the project is also doing. Early on, I think there were some discussions at DRC, there were some thoughts about maybe not putting in the wall, maybe trying to reduce this landscaping along the southern boundary, but between DRC and now, the project's been able to be designed to meet both of those criteria. So they're not asking the Planning Commission to, for any modifications related to that tonight. But those are requirements that the zoning code is requesting that conditional use permit look at, is this buffer here between the project and future uses. Obviously, when we get here and design here, you know, maybe there'll be the opportunity for some more buffering before we get to homes. We can look at that in the future. The other thing the conditional use permit is wanting to look at is making sure that uses in these areas are not detrimental to uses of the downtown. So this zoning code, and as you recall, our zoning code update, going through those sections, our zoning code hasn't been updated in a long time. So back in the 80s, late 80s, when the zoning code was adopted, they were really trying to make sure that uses weren't going to conflict with downtown. One of the main uses was theaters. Trying, you know, there were, at the time, there was trying to put theaters out near Target, that kind of area, and not allowing that and getting a theater into downtown was an accomplishment of that section. Looking at this project, we're not concerned about light industrial, commercial, warehouse uses conflicting with downtown. So there are findings in the resolution that identify that, that the Planning Commission can make, but that's the conditional use permit requirement. The applicants are going to do a presentation, so I'm not going to get into all the walls and fencing, because I think they're going to go over that a little bit, but we do have specifics of where that's going to go. We can answer questions if they don't get answered during the presentation, but back to this, back to the southern boundary. So this is a proposed masonry, split-faced masonry wall that's proposed along this southern boundary. And then this is a cross-section. This cross-section is looking east, so if you were standing here and looking east towards, like out towards Barney Schwartz. So this is that wall, 10-foot buffer area. There's landscaping on either side to make up that 10-feet area, because there's some challenges back there with some drainage channels and things that that wall is working around. So that's, that wall kind of goes in and out. Sometimes it's up to 10 feet, sometimes it's down to five, but there's, they're showing landscaping on either side. There's some different plant selections they're showing on their landscape plan. One of the DRC requests was to show how trucks would get in and out of the docks, or how some of the different turning radiuses. So this sheet has been included to show how the truck, the larger trucks would work around this building. This is showing more emergency access, not necessarily large trucks in this area. So we did receive a few letters today. One was from the San Luis Obispo County Air Pollution Control District, and one was from a group, attorney group, who represents a group called Safer. The Air Pollution Control District, what we are looking at doing, staff along with the applicants have worked together this afternoon to address some of the concerns that the Air Pollution Control District had. They recommended a series of conditions related to dust control that didn't get put in the conditions of approval, so we're going to put those in. And then there was some numbers related to the modeling that the APCD requested a few conditions. So the applicant team, who's worked on similar projects and had similar conditions in other cities, was able to pick one of the conditions that the Air Pollution Control District recommended. So the, this, and I'm not really asking you to read it, just wanted to put it up here. These are all the standard dust control measures, so watering with water truck and different things. So those are going to get put in as a condition of approval. And then the main one was the APCD recommended that the applicant commit to the project receiving power from the Central Coast Community Energy. This was the Monterey Bay group who came through. So this is something that's pretty typical on these larger projects, and the applicant was familiar with it, and agreed to adding this mitigation measure. So as part of your, if the commission wants to recommend to the council approval, we'll also recommend those Air Pollution Control District conditions as well. The other group, they indicated that they recommended that an environmental impact report be processed on this project, and not a mitigated negative declaration, which is before you tonight. They brought up the oak tree impacts as mitigations, as something they thought needed an EIR, and they also brought up the, it was the oaks and the, I believe, the air quality. We've addressed those in the mitigated negative declaration. We have an arborist report. The request for removal of oaks is going through a process that the Oak Tree Ordinance of the municipal code allows the Planning Commission and council to do. So there is, the question of whether oaks for this project should be removed or not are really based on the ordinance and the arborist report. So that's what we are working with. We can answer questions on those. We can make a recommendation to council. Council will have to make that decision or not, but this is a typical process that projects go through. And it is, it is possible to indicate that there's not a significant impact based on the removal of trees and the mitigation being proposed for replacement trees, which is consistent with the ordinance. If it was something where we didn't have ordinance, we didn't have policies, and it was indicated that it could not be mitigated, then that's when environmental impact reports come in, but in this case, it's being mitigated. It's being mitigated in a manner that is consistent with the policies of the zoning code. So, and then we are looking, and we discuss the Air Pollution Control District conditions and adding those. This is a recommendation to council, so we anticipate we may hear additional from the group. They may speak at public comment tonight, but we'll be prepared to answer questions and take this project to council under the direction of our city attorney. The other one that the letter brought up, this Safer letter, was Habitat. They indicated Kit Fox Habitat. There are mitigations related to protection of the area during construction. This site is located in an area that's considered infill and disturbed in the city's general plan, so it is not required to have the compensatory mitigation as others do out of the area. So this site, when reviewed by the EIR, that was approved with the city's land use element, was not indicated as significant habitat for the Kit Fox. So tonight, what we're looking for is the Planning Commission to review and accept comments on this project, but we'd be making recommendations to the city council for draft resolution A regarding the mitigated negative declaration with the added Air Pollution Control District conditions. Option B, or A would be the MND resolution, B would be the development plan, the oak tree, and then would also be the conditional use permit. I missed putting that in here. The conditional use permit would be part of draft resolution B. And then draft resolution C is the vesting tentative tract map for the subdivision. The other letter we received tonight that didn't get in time for your addendum was a letter from Tony Gaspar. And if you recall, Mr. Gaspar was at our last Planning Commission meeting when we talked about the zoning code update and lighting. So he just wanted us to make sure that this project had shielded lighting, which he recognized through the project and through the cut sheets for the lights, that the lights seemed appropriate. However, he brought up, there was some LED lighting shown, uplighting for signage, and he thought we might want to take a look at that and maybe have more down type lighting or something, which we can definitely take a look at, and our standard conditions of approval, the checkboxes in the resolutions already require that. So we think we've adequately addressed that, but we definitely, as the signage program comes in the future back to the DRC, we can take a look at the specific lighting. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Darren. If my fellow commissioners are okay, maybe we would allow the applicant to do their presentation, and then we'll take questions for staff and the applicant. So please, by all means, go ahead.
Greetings, Planning Commissioners. My name is Damian Mavis. I'm one of the founders of Covellup Inc. Covellup has been doing development and construction projects in the Central Coast for the past 20 years. For this project, we're lucky enough to join forces with Michael Stolti, who's also a Central Coast developer and Slow County native. The last project we did in Paso was renovation and repositioning of the old Paris Precision Building on Mona Drive, and it really made us proud that we took a vacant 200,000-square-foot building and turned it into a space where it now, six businesses with over 200 employees thrive. And I would just say, we couldn't have done it without the support of the city's Planning and Building Department. We see this Ardmore Industrial Park project in a very similar fashion, as a way to provide homes for dozens of businesses within the city. We designed this to be a premier light industrial park that is above all flexible, to cater to a wide range of tenants, everything from kind of the Tin City boutique wineries to larger format manufacturing and distribution centers. With spaces ranging from 2,000 square feet to 125,000 square feet, we aim to be able to deliver efficient, modern, and attractive suites to small local businesses, as well as those businesses looking to relocate from elsewhere. We see Paso as a great place to do business, and we think our tenants will see the same. So with that, I'd like to introduce our project team. We have Jamie Jones and Ian McCarville with Kirk Consulting, Rodney Thurman with Heritage Tree Consulting, Rebecca Newman with Era Studio Architects, of course, Michael Stoltly and myself as the project applicants. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Chairperson Christensen and Planning Commissioners. My name is Ian McCarville, and I'm a senior planner here at Kirk Consulting. Tonight, I will be providing an overview of the project's scope and some of the comments we received during the DRC meeting. Then I will hand over the presentation to Rodney to talk about the Tree Impact Report, and then Rebecca will conclude the presentation with a discussion on the site plans and the overall project design. The project site is located at 2930 Union Road in Paso Robles on Lot 6 and 13 of APN 025-362-043. The project site is approximately 14 acres in size, is owned commercial, light, industrial, and is located within a planned development, hillside development, and airport influence overlay district. Existing uses on the site consist of abandoned agricultural structures and approximately 12 acres of horse pasture. The objective, objectives of this project is to establish a mixed-use development with light industrial and commercial components that can respond to a growing market demand, construct structures that are modern, industrial aesthetic, and that can evolve with growing retail demand over time, preserve the two healthy oak trees on the site, and develop a meaningful connection between the built environment and nature, and encourage a synergistic commercial neighborhood that will provide an opportunity for a range of businesses and visitor-serving uses. The project includes two major requests. One is for a vesting tentative parcel map to subdivide Lot 6 into two parcels, and then a request for a phased planned development slash conditional use permit to allow the construction of six commercial light industrial buildings totaling 240,327 square feet and associated site improvements. As previously mentioned, the project underwent review at the July 31 DRC meeting. During this session, the committee advised us to furnish supplemental details concerning various aspects of the projects. Those aspects included truck and pedestrian circulation, oak trees, landscaping, parking calculations, fence, wall, and architectural details, and view simulations. Subsequently, on October 5th, we submitted a comprehensive response package to formally address the comments we received during the DRC meeting, and we will share those in the upcoming slides as well. Here we have the overall site and phasing plan. Lot 13, which is shown on the left, will be constructed in Phase 1, and Lot 6, which is shown on the right, will be subdivided into two parcels, parcel A and parcel B. Parcel A, which is shown in blue, will be built out in Phase 1, and parcel B, which is shown in red, will be built out in Phase 2. We expect that Building One will support a warehousing tenant, and Buildings 2 through 6 will support a mix of retail, wine-making, storage, and/or manufacturing uses. As you can see on this slide, Lot 6 will have multiple pedestrian connections to Ardmore Road and Ardmore Extension to facilitate easy and safe access for pedestrians, enhancing connectivity within the area, and promoting a walkable environment. Lot 13 will have fewer pedestrian connections since it's proposed to be used as a warehouse and is not service-focused. Here we have the truck circulation plan for Lot 13. Our proposal includes the implementation of a private shared access road at the western end of the site, as indicated at the top of the screen. This access road will serve Building One and the neighboring site to the west, optimizing the flow of semi-truck traffic. The intent is to encourage semi-truck traffic to predominantly utilize the western entrance, thereby minimizing potentially conflicting traffic patterns across the rest of the site. So semi-trucks will not be circulating around the building, and therefore, we only modeled the Paso Robles ladder truck turning patterns around the rest of the site, and you can see that indicated here with the arrows. For the circulation plan on Lot 6, it is worth noting that we do not anticipate having semi-trucks on this site. Therefore, we specifically modeled the Paso Robles ladder truck for this scenario, and as you can see, the site design provides ample circulation space to accommodate the fire truck without any constraints. We conducted a comprehensive and conservative parking analysis for the proposed project, and this slide presents the specific requirements for Lot 13, which is designated for office and warehouse use. The analysis concluded that the lot, excuse me, that Lot 13 necessitates a total of 144 parking spaces, encompassing six ADA spaces and eight motorcycle spaces. And in line with these requirements, our proposal includes 154 parking spaces and eight motorcycle parking spaces, while also incorporating eight ADA spaces to ensure accessibility compliance. We did conduct a separate analysis for parcel A and B within Lot 6 to ensure that each phase of development met the required parking standards. Parcel A necessitates a total of 83 standard parking spaces, which included three ADA spaces and four motorcycle spaces, and our proposal meets these requirements with 83 standard spaces, four ADA spaces, and eight motorcycle spaces. Parcel B, on the other hand, requires 71 parking spaces, including two ADA spaces and four motorcycle spaces, while our proposal provides 73 total spaces, including four ADA spaces. Notably, since parcel A is scheduled for development prior to parcel B... Notably, since Parcel A is scheduled for development prior to Parcel B, the motorcycle parking spaces provided during the initial phase will fulfill the motorcycle parking requirements for Parcel B, ensuring compliance with the parking regulations throughout the project's progression. Lastly, it should be noted that a shared blanket reciprocal access and parking easement will be established in perpetuity over Parcel A and Parcel B for vehicular traffic. The application does propose four types of fencing. We have chain link with vertical privacy slats, vinyl coated chain link, black tube steel fencing, and a decorative masonry wall. The decorative masonry wall is proposed along the southern property line of Lot 13, which is consistent with the zoning code, as Darren had mentioned. Chain link fencing with privacy slats is proposed along a portion of the western property line of Lot 13, which is consistent with the existing fencing on the adjacent neighbor's property. Vinyl coated chain link fencing is proposed along the eastern and northern property lines, as well as around the retention basin located at the northeastern corner of the site. This fencing type will allow shrubs to grow on them, providing a layer of vegetative screening to soften offsite views from the proposed development. And lastly, we have black tube steel fencing proposed around one of the oak trees in order to protect the critical root zone. As Darren mentioned, the initial application did include a request to modify the landscape screening standards for the southern property line of Lot 13. However, in response to the guidance from DRC, we reevaluated this area and determined that we could meet the 10-foot-thick landscape screening requirement. Therefore, we have formally withdrawn the request to modify the standard and have included the updated landscape sections on this slide for your reference. Our proposed solution involves the strategic placement of dense shrubs and trees to effectively screen the parking area from offsite views. Additionally, we are introducing drought-tolerant grasses in front of the decorative masonry block wall to not only fulfill functional screening needs, but also to enhance the site's aesthetic appeal. It is important to note that the property line in question abuts the North Chandler Ranch specific plan area, which currently has no development plans in progress. Furthermore, the North Chandler Ranch concept plan illustrates the area behind this property line as designated open space. Here we have the existing neighborhood context map. As you can see, the project site is surrounded by commercial light industrial zone parcels to the north, east, and west, and to the south, there is that vacant residential agricultural zone parcel, which is designated for the North Chandler Ranch specific plan. Surrounding uses consist of single-family residences to the west and north, and commercial industrial uses like spur construction and Daniels Woodlands to the west. Here we have the future neighborhood context map, which illustrates the future circulation and nearby developments. To the south is that North Chandler Ranch concept plan. Northeast is the New Marriott Hotel, and further north is the Justin Winery expansion. The intent of this exhibit is to show how the neighborhood conditions are slated to evolve over the years, for which this project has accounted for by incorporating building designs that are flexible and able to evolve to accommodate increased retail demand. For example, as Ardmore Extension, which is proposed as a part of this project, will not immediately connect to New Airport Road. Therefore, the buildings facing Ardmore Extension will be primarily service-focused in the short term. However, once Ardmore Extension does connect to New Airport Road, these buildings will have the opportunity to evolve into a more retail-focused design. This concept of evolving building facades will be illustrated later in this presentation. With that, I will now like to turn the presentation over to Rodney Thurman, the project arborist, who will talk about the Tree Impact Report that was completed for the project. Thank you.
Let me get to my first slide here. So as staff mentioned, we have made several trips out to inspect the trees. I made two trips, one as the initial inspection, which is what we call a level-two ground-based inspection, where we do a 360-degree walk around the trees, and then we return later to do a more in-depth inspection of three of the trees with what we call a resistograph, which actually checks the density of the tree and looks for cavities, and gives a reading according to what the density and if there are any voids in the tree. So as was mentioned, there were eight trees on site. Six trees were identified in very poor condition and poor health, and I recommended those for removal. Then two trees, numbers 10 and 13, were in good and also poor condition, and I can get into that a little bit more, but they were found to be, number 10 is the most healthy and very stable tree. Number 13, which did have some issues, which included some decay, but based on its thickness of the outer core, was found to be stable enough to be retained, but with fencing protection to keep pedestrians out of that area if something did fail. And as I mentioned, the numerous visits to the site, including one visit with the arborist that has been contracted to the city to basically verify reports from companies like mine. So there was a consensus that what I assessed was similar to that other arborist's opinion. And as mentioned up here, also, Co-develop has done some shifting and moving of buildings to accommodate the trees, to give more root space, because we don't want to just have a tree, we want to have it to be healthy afterwards. So moving into oak tree mitigation, per the Ordinance 835, you are required to replace 25% of the overall diameter of trees removed. We propose 270 inches of diameter be removed. These are quite large trees, and replacement at 25% is 67.5 inches, and I can get into a little bit more of that. First, we'll just kind of look at some of the issues with the trees. I'd say like tree number three, for example, is probably one of the worst examples here where we have large branch failures, decay that you can see circle, but then also extends all the way into the trunk. So the tree is probably, that's one good branch left. So there was a lot of those kind of examples. Tree two with the decay cavity extending all the way to the roots, and you can see that opening there. It's almost, I can't see, approximately 12-inch diameter. And all these trees, they have been in a horse pasture slash cattle operation, which means there's a lot of damage to roots, compaction, also droughty conditions because of the compaction and just normal weather conditions. And they are also what we call decadent or over-mature trees, so typical valley oak, which all these are, lives to about 300 years in the perfect conditions. I would assume these are about, just based on the size, 150 years. So they're getting toward the end of their life in our conditions, near better water sources. They might get a little larger and live longer, but nevertheless, they have a lot of issues, including drought, root disease, and that's why most of them have been deemed to be removed. And the two trees that are being proposed for retention, tree 10, which I mentioned was the best tree, the top slide there, you can see the nice overall canopy shape. It does not have any decay in the trunk or any root decay that we could determine from external inspection. Tree 13, which was tested with a resistograph and found to have some decay in the trunk, however, it had the thickest shell strength compared to some of the other ones that were also tested for a resistograph shell thickness. So I found that because there was no buckling or open cavities, that would make the trunk even more weak, that we could retain this tree, but with the caveat that the tree be pruned to remove some of the decaying branches, and also to cordon off the tree to prevent pedestrians from being directly in the area of the tree, and also, the fencing would be enough space for protection. So if the tree did fail completely for some reason, mainly based on the decay, that it would not strike any buildings. So as we've already addressed, the two trees here, tree 10 is kind of down in the lower middle, and tree 13, which is the one that would be fenced off and kind of preventing the pedestrian access, is up to the upper left. And as far as oak tree mitigation, this site does have a lot of buildings on it. The trees that we're proposing would be native valley oaks to keep consistent with the look and actually just the species that grow there naturally. 21 oak trees are proposed for onsite. I think that's a reasonable amount to give them enough room to mature and grow. And then we would propose that 13 trees would be either pay in lieu fees or planted offsite based on your approval, and that would compensate for the entire loss of the 25% of the diameter of the trees. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them further, give you any more detail on the inspections.
We're going to move on with the rest of the presentation, then we'll come back with questions after.
Okay, sounds good. I will hand it off to Rebecca Newman, and she can go over the landscape plan.
All right. Thank you, Ian and Rodney. Good evening, Chairperson Christensen and Commissioners. My name is Rebecca Newman, and I'm with Era Studio Architects. Oh, there we go. Oh, which way? You have the PDF.
I saw your message about not being able to hear.
Okay, thanks. I just wasn't sure how long it was taking, and I was like, oh no, I lost them again.
This is it. Yeah. Yes, that's it. Thank you so much. All right. I know that some of you have already seen the details from the DRC, but we're really excited about this project, and I wanted to just take a few minutes to walk through the site design and the architecture for those that may be seeing this for the first time. Ardmore Industrial is a multi-building complex that's been designed for flexibility in an evolving service and retail market. As depicted in the slide above and as shown on the site plan, the buildings have been oriented with focal points around the existing oak trees. The project has been designed to meet the tenants, large and small, as well as buildings which could evolve if the retail demand increases. The site has been landscaped with drought-tolerant plants, landscaped street frontages, vegetated bio-retention areas, and we have anticipated 21 replacement oak trees as required by the city's ordinances. Oh, sorry. And as required by the city's ordinances, we have provided a decorative block wall with minimum 10 feet landscape screening at the southern boundary. An elevation view was shown earlier in Ian's presentation. We'll get into the design details a little bit later, but first, I wanted to share a few rendered perspective views of the project. The first is from the corner of Ardmore and future Ardmore Extension, looking to the northeast. You can see Buildings 2, 4, and 6 with several storefront openings, awnings, architectural trellises, and focal corner elements. This is a view looking east into the complex between Buildings 2, 3, 4, and 5. In addition to the architectural features noted in the previous slide, each building has been designed to accommodate both retail and industrial tenants with a common focal area of an existing oak tree. This view has been added as requested during our DRC meeting. It is a photo simulation showing the project looking down Ardmore Extension, but from a ways-back adjacent to the existing Daniels Woodland. From here, you can see Daniels Woodland on the immediate left and the existing fence line of Case Specific on the right, beyond our Buildings 1 and 2. This and the next few slides are a recap of the thought process behind the building architecture and how we've built flexibility into the project. Each building has been designed to follow one or more of these processes. Shown here is what we're calling the pedestrian-focused elevations. These are ideal for spaces facing Ardmore and those facing the internal courtyards. They feature storefront entries, covered awnings, trellis-covered walkways, and focal corner elements. And we've added a few design details as requested during the DRC. In the top right, you can see a perspective view of how we're constructing some of these featured architectural trellises over the walkways, as well as the corner focal elements with the core 10 wrapped siding. Okay. On the other end of the spectrum is the service-focused elevation. These are ideal for spaces without heavy pedestrian traffic. They include roll-up doors with clear-story windows for natural light, differing metal panel profiles and colors, and awnings at the man doors. As a mix of our pedestrian service-focused elevations, we've defined hybrid-focused elements. These are ideal for smaller spaces needing both retail and warehouse access. They have both roll-up doors and storefront entries, clear-story windows, trellis-covered walkways and awnings, as well as the facade with metal panel accent profiles and colors. Building 1, being the largest building on the site, can be used by either one tenant or multiple, each with their own office, warehouse, and distribution elements. Architecturally, this building mimics some of the elements discussed in the previous slide, such as storefront entries, corner and entry focal elements, architectural awnings, and contrasting metal panel profiles and colors. At the request of DRC, we've added more architectural details, including the recessed windows, as well as the architectural awnings over the entries. As an example of the flexibility of the building... As an example of the flexibility of the buildings, this slide shows how a service facade can easily transition to a retail storefront with minimal tenant improvements. As depicted, building three facing Ardmore Extension could evolve from serving an industrial warehouse use to a pedestrian focused facade if retail demand were to increase. The next two slides show the high quality materials selected for the project, which will both, which will look good both on day one and for many years to come. Building one is clad with a light gray ribbed metal siding with darker panels to accent the entries and break up the mass. The entries will also be accentuated with black storefront and cantilevered awnings. Buildings two through six use similar high quality materials with the addition of core ten panels at the corner focal elements, raw steel beams, and perforated metal at the trellis elements. Other structures on the site include monument signage, sight lighting, and covered trash enclosures which mimic and complement the materiality of the buildings. And this concludes our presentation. Thank you again for the opportunity. This is a project we're very excited about and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you very much. All right, we'll start with Commissioner Marlowe. Do you have any questions for staff or the applicant?
Yeah, I have a few. Let me go through my notes here. I guess to start, two of the trees that are, the two trees that are remaining, obviously 10 is in good health, 13 is in okay health. What, what's the, is there a plan for any sort of like maintenance upkeep, future inspections? Like how, like if the tree is having issues or continues to have the issues, is there a way of saving it or would that potential of that tree dying in the future?
Yes, thank you. So yeah, initially, just before any construction is done, we'd recommend maintenance pruning, which would remove decaying branches. We'd also have to raise the canopy so we could have some clearance. So in general, it would receive maintenance before the project starts. Then I've also recommended, especially for tree number 13, to have annual inspections or, you know, at least every couple of years to kind of keep an update on this tree's health and structure. Ultimately, trees do get older and decline. This one is kind of, tree number 13 is a little bit further along that, that line. So the, the idea was it was worthy of keeping for the short term. Say we get 20 years out of it potentially. It seemed like a worthy cause to save the tree. And then of course, just like any other tree in the whole city, we look at it and, and if it's time to go, then that would be the case. And then of course replanting would happen. So instead of just only taking the absolute perfect specimen, we kind of made some concessions and that's why we talked about that fencing and trying to keep things more safe, but enabling us to keep a tree that's a little more decadent, but still has some potential. So there would be maintenance or be ongoing inspections as needed and I think that that would help retain that tree for a little longer time.
Yeah, that, that answers my question. I think that's the only question I have regarding trees. As far as the letter we got from Safer, and what would be their reasoning or the benefit to do an EIR versus, and maybe this is for staff, versus the mitigated negative declaration that we already have? What, like what would be their purpose or what would you think their purpose would be and what benefit would an EIR have over what we, what we have here?
I don't know that they outlined specifically why they submitted the letter. I think they're just trying to have the commission staff look at the mitigated declaration, make sure it addresses those issues. I'm not sure if they are going to speak during public comment or if we'll get additional letters as this project moves towards city council. According to the letter, they were questioning the mitigation related to the oaks and also the habitat. So we think we have the necessary measures and analysis where we can indicate that the impacts will be less insignificant with the mitigation applied.
Yeah, sounds good. And then really the only other one is traffic. Obviously you guys are trying to route trucks to the west, though it seems that if you rent out all those tenant spaces, really fill that thing up, that you could have a major point of congestion where they're exiting. It says on the Union Road, but looking on the map, it kind of like ties into Golden Hill Road from what I can tell. So is there, has a traffic study been done? Is there like a, any sort of future plans for the city to put some sort of adjustment there, roundabout? Or it, what's the thoughts on how we think that's going to pan out down the road?
There was a traffic analysis done. So the city engineer worked with our traffic consultant to review the project. The conditions of approval have been included. However, I think with the, the city's circulation element, with the, the new roundabout at Golden Hill, with the, you know, someday future alignment of Union Road, the Overpass Project are all some major changes to the circulation in the area. We see this as a important area. However, with the current zoning, with a complying with the current zoning, we're comfortable with the streets in their current configuration, especially with the new roundabout. There is the work being done to, you know, right turns off of Union Road going on to Highway 46 East. So there's a hotel project next door to this in the vicinity where there's conditions, requirements to shut off that left turn movement from Union Road going back towards town, having to cross those, those lanes. So that's one of the near future things, improvements that'll be done. But in general, with the amount of, with the uses and with the amount of truck traffic with the new roundabout, we're comfortable with the project and the current circulation. They will be paying traffic impact fees on all the buildings for, you know, future improvements. They're, they're fair share.
All right. Really, that's a good question. Thanks.
All right, Commissioner Kovaruvias, please.
Thank you. So I'll address the question first to staff, but maybe the arborist will weigh in on it. So just for clarity, appreciate the, the, the presentation by the arborist. On page three of our report, it did indicate that the requirement is to plant 67.5 inches in diameter of trees, of new trees, which is great. On page seven of our report, it indicated that there's a requirement, there's a requirement for 34 trees at one and a half inches in diameter. So when I do the math, obviously that doesn't equate to 67.5. So my question, just for clarity, the arborist is proposing 21 onsite and possibly 13 offsite. So I guess what are we gonna, what are we gonna require? I guess as clarity for, for respect to the replacement, the mitigation?
Sure, and I think the difference is the one and a half inch caliper and then I think there's somewhere it shows two inch caliper. I think their landscape plan shows that. So the, the condition number eight and the conditions of approval, which is, it's a page, that's exhibit A of the resolution B, is where we talk about the onsite planting of 67 and a half inches replacement, which would be 34 inch and a half. We do, what they, I did understand that they're not sure if they're going to be able to plant 34 trees onsite in a manner that gives them enough room. So what I did is added a sentence to condition number eight that indicated that in the event that the project arborist finds that there is not room to plant all of the trees onsite and in manner that would allow trees to strive, payments per tree can be made to the city's oak replacement fund, and that's a $200 per tree. So my math shows the 67 and a half being the 34, but we'll verify that between now and council, make sure that's calculated. And what I'll do is we'll make sure we're talking apples to apples on diameter so that it's not confusing.
Right. So you, I think you already started to answer my second part of the question is, so the, the specific location of the replacement trees is not determined yet?
They've shown it on their landscape plan, their, their conceptual landscape plan. So this condition will require us to work with the arborist, work with their team on the, that final landscaping plan. And then at that time, we'll indicate, determine how many can be on there and then how many would be in lieu. We'll have to figure that out prior to additions of the building permit so that we can get those in lieu fees paid prior to additions.
Okay. So is some of that clarity, is that, is that determined prior to the city council portion of the presentation or is that something that can be?
So what I, what I want to do is I want to clarify the number of inches, the diameter, and make condition number eight specific. I'll work with the, their team and make sure we're on the same page as it goes to council. But to determine specifically how many onsite, how many in lieu fee, I think it'll take a look, we'll get more down in the construction drawings on that to make that determination.
Awesome, okay. And then for clarity, Darren, page nine, it talks about the requirement for the applicant to participate in an agreement, share costs associated with construction and maintenance, road stuff. My question is, it doesn't list any type of specific percentage, amount, just from my own knowledge, I would assume they're gonna, they're gonna agree to, to a shared contract or shared agreement, but it's, it's, how do they know? I mean, I, I would assume as an applicant, you kind of want to have an idea, well, what's that going to cost us, you know? How is that determined?
What condition is that?
It's on page nine, under, it's, it's actually right prior to the options. Lastly, the applicant will be required to participate in an agreement to share costs associated with construction and maintenance of these and other affected local roads. And, and I totally, I think I've read other things like that similar in prior presentations, but I don't, I mean, how, how did the applicant determine what their percentage is and, and what's that kind of approximate? I mean, how's that work?
And I, I'll ask the city engineer, however, I think that might have been something from the previous project. I think it doesn't pertain to that, but I'll confirm with engineering on the conditions of approval whether that's a requirement or not.
Be part of draft.
I think they're checking it out right now.
Okay.
Maybe if we can come back to that one?
Sure.
We'll let them take a look at that.
Absolutely. And then the parking allocation. The applicant explained, great job in explaining the parking allocation, in particular the motorcycle, where they've absorbed four of these stalls in one part, meaning no one in the other. So my question is, is that customary? Are they, is that something that's allowable? It's, it's not specific that certain parking has to be within a certain spot or area of the project? So they're basically using another portion of the property to mitigate the lack of motorcycle parking in, in one spot? So, so is that customary? Is that allowable?
Well, I think once both phases are built, it will be that spot. It will be the, the center or that area. So I think all they're indicating is that with the first phase, they're going to meet their demand for their motorcycle with the first phase.
Right.
So when the second phase comes, they'll all be there. I think he was just indicating that getting down into the brass tacks, that the motorcycle spaces will be done in phase one. But, but the zoning code does allow for a certain number of motorcycle spaces and that's what they're referring to.
So they're going to cover the necessity in phase one so that they don't have to cover it in phase two, just, just to the motorcycles?
This wasn't that bigger warehouse building. This was the phase one and two of the smaller, light industrial park area.
Right.
And I, and we're welcome to ask Mr. McCarville if he wanted to explain that a little further, but that's what I understood is they're all being provided, they're just all being built in phase one.
Right. And that's what I understood and I just want to make sure that that is something, as long as they're available and installed, regardless if it's in phase one or phase two.
There's not a specific requirement that they be dispersed at a certain spot. I think that they'll be, this is a small enough area where they'll be pretty central anyway.
Yeah, no, that, that explains, I'm satisfied with that. So to the applicant, just a curiosity question, and anybody can answer this, with such a large warehouse, 125,000 square feet, are there specific tenants in mind? I mean, I would, I would assume that the, the intention is to hopefully maybe find one tenant to occupy the entire facility? I mean, what's, because you did a great job in explaining for parcel A and B, kind of the idea, the, the attraction to certain industries, which is great. 125,000 square feet, and by the way, I do love what you guys did with the old Paris building. I remember that very well. They should be clients of mine. So yeah, I'm just curious about, about lot 13.
Sure. So the way it's designed is it could be broken up into three spaces of approximately 40,000 square feet each, or one or two. So it is kind of built with the maximum flexibility in mind. We don't have any specific tenants, but I think tenants that could go in there would be large wineries as well as distribution centers, manufacturing company like Precision, Paris Precision sheet metal products, if they still existed, could, you know, use a, use a building like this. So it's really designed to be able to be configured into many different, or be appropriate for different cases.
So if, if in a worst case scenario, it were to be divided, it sounds like the division portion of it is about 40,000 square feet per unit. You probably wouldn't, wouldn't want or need to go any smaller than, or could you?
You, you could go smaller. The, the, the building will be built as, so that the interior demising walls would be non-structural, so they could be slid around essentially to any configuration.
Okay, that answers my question. Perfect. Okay, no other questions for now?
Okay, Commissioner Conley.
I had questions on page nine, like fellow Commissioner Kovaruvias. With regard to additional, additionally, a mitigation measure would be added at the top of the page. I was wondering where that would be within the resolution A, B, or C? And it would require the applicant to participate in one of the following improvements. And I was, next question is which one would be decided and how would that be decided? If these, if these mitigation measures are required on this project or if this is a mistake? But at the top of page nine, I had similar questions. Also, with regard to that paragraph just above options, it said that there'd be some agreement to participate in a cost sharing of construction and maintenance that would be included in the city's development impact fees. And I wanted to know if that was part of the draft resolutions. So basically, my concern is with regard to traffic mitigation, I, I really like the project and I think it's nice that it's commercial and it's going to be generating jobs. But speaking for a lot of citizens in Paso Robles, they're always concerned about development and how that might impact traffic in the area. And if you have like another 10 to 15 similar size areas impacting or built around this area with traffic impacts, it would at peak hour take up a full lane. So I'm just wondering if these mitigation measures are more, anywhere where it's more specified, which one of these they would do, how it's determined, where it's located in the resolutions?
So the, the letter we got from the Air Pollution Control District had some conditions. Are those the ones you're referring to?
No, I'm talking about top of page nine, the staff report. It says additionally, a mitigation measure has been added, but it doesn't say where, requiring the applicant to participate in one, but it didn't say which one of the following improvements to be constructed to. improvements to be constructed to serve the project.
So that is a, that is a carryover from a previous project.
Okay.
So that, that was related to the airport road, highway 46 east for the Dow Stravinsky project.
So this got mistakenly inputted here.
Correct.
Okay. Um, yeah, I was part of the, uh, DRC and I was happy to see that, uh, they did additional things to, uh, show additional perspectives. They added some, uh, architectural elements for pedestrians. They added the truck turning template. I think you guys did a very good job on that and I appreciate that. Um, with regard to the tree mitigation, I think we've already discussed that, but my math came to about 13 trees offsite besides the 21 trees onsite. So, but it didn't say specifically 13 trees. So it seems like for every inch you have a, for every two inches, you have a tree, basically. So, uh, then my, uh, I guess my final question is, uh, with regard to the safer comment, uh, requiring a full ER, EIR instead of a mitigated negative debt declaration. Um, I think the Arbus report adequately addresses the tree, um, tree health and the mitigation. And, um, uh, mitigated negative deck, if it, if it specifically identifies the, the , uh, impacts that are associated with the project and the mitigation would cover that portion of their concern. With regard to the, uh, kit fox habitat, I was wondering if the mitigated negative deck included anything about potential impacts to kit box habitat?
It does.
Okay.
And just to clarify, the, the conditions of approval that were outlined in the Arbus report for protection during construction, for maintenance, for, uh, the fencing, all those kinds of things are included as conditions of approval in the project resolution. So those weren't mitigation measures because those are already requirements of the, of the policies of the municipal code. Uh, so we didn't need to have specific-
The discussions we've had about the oak trees, I too wondered where they were going. So I know you're gonna be handling that. Um, I had a question, Darren, I know this is a staff question, I might have a question for the applicant on circulation. Ask David Athie, I'm always asking questions about circulation. But Darren, to you, um, I, I heard you say, and I heard you suggest that the applicant is fine with using, uh, a commitment to this community energy project. Is, is that standard that we request that? I mean, that, that, that part caught me by surprise.
No, not from the city. This is coming from the air pollution control district as a comment to the mitigated negative declaration. So the city doesn't get involved with telling folks, you know, what, what energy company to use. However, that's an option that would address the comments from the air pollution control district that the applicants have reviewed and have agreed to.
And have agreed to. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I really appreciate that. Um, and in a moment, I'll go to Rebecca on kind of an architectural question. If you could, I can't remember your first name, could you please re-explain to me circulation? How people move, the trucks, how large the trucks are? I know you've done a great job with the diagrams, but I kind of want to understand how this all works. And if I can ask kind of a, a tough question, how do you in the short term envision large trucks getting through a roundabout or, or accessing going east or west of 46? What, what's kind of the thought process? So there you go.
Absolutely. So Ian McCarville with Kirk Consulting. And so a, as I mentioned in our presentation, we did really envision building one having the primary access from that western shared private road. And the purpose being is that we wanted to limit, um, potential conflicts with having trucks circulate the rest of the site.
The pointer, can you kind of put, yeah.
Absolutely.
That's perfect. That's what I need.
So here's that western intersection we're talking about and here's that shared access road that's gonna be, um, uh, shared by both this site and the neighboring property site. And so by having the, um, loading docks at this side of the site, this dog here, ear kind of protects it from the view of people coming from, um, from the north. And the goal and the, what we're proposing is that these trucks would not circulate the rest of the site. So these turning movements here are the fire trucks that we modeled and all of the semi-trucks would stay up here. On this site, we're not proposing any semi-trucks and so we modeled just the Paso Robles truck.
Okay. And, um, like the size of the trucks and, and where they'll be going, how they go east and west on 46, what, what do you think is the recommended path? And can they easily maneuver the roundabout that we've installed? But it's actually David working better than I ever thought. Um, but the size of the truck is an issue. So I kind of wanted to know a little bit more about that. We're approving projects and we have trucks moving through them. What's the thought process?
Sure. I'll actually ask Jamie, maybe you could answer that a little more fluently? Yeah, thank you.
Hi Jamie.
Hi Sheri, thank you. And I'll do my best, but I also-
Jamie, can you introduce yourself for us?
I'm sorry, Jamie Jones, Kirk Consulting. And so I'll do my best, although I wasn't, um, involved in the, the preparation of the traffic studies, you know, that that's done under the direction of, of the city engineer. And in working with that, I would like to make one point as far as circulation goes. Whenever we originally, um, applied for the project or started talking about the project and circulation, and Mr. Athie brought up the movement of, of the big trucks as a concern. We originally had the traffic access offset from Ardmore. We were keeping it entirely on our project site. So, um, the city engineer asked us to look at opportunities to share access with our neighboring property owners so that we can have controlled access at a single location, knowing that there's gonna be, there's larger trucks coming out of Spur and there'd be larger trucks coming out of, coming out of our site that we would have a stop sign. And so we think at least as far as whichever direction the trucks are going, we know that they're not just loading out onto Ardmore without controlled trap, without a controlled stop. So I think our options are to come down Ardmore and go through, um, your, the new roundabout, which I love. So, um, and is my understanding, although, um, whoops, did you just get back there? And you, your city has been, I've been listening to Deedis talk about it on KPRL, but you've been testing it and making sure that it can handle the truck, the turning movements for larger trucks. So if the traffic, they have the opportunity to go back out here, you know, or they can come down and go to Union and, you know, that would be their direct access if they wanted to go to the east. And I would see them, if they were wanting to go to the west, getting into the Golden Hill intersection. That would be reasonable to me as a person that drives around Paso Robles as being the, the easiest way to go both directions.
And the length, the size of some of these vehicles still.
Um, did we have, do you know what? We had that modeled at, Ian, on the, um, 53 feet.
Thank you.
Sure. I appreciate that. Um, yeah, that's it for now.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks Jamie. Um, I will have a few questions here, so let me figure out where I want to start. Oh, maybe, uh, Jamie, I'm sorry to let you sit down. This is a question for you in regards to that shared access road, since I wrote it down based upon your notes. Has that been an agreement that's already been reached with the neighbor?
So it's been, uh, an agreement predicated on us receiving approval. Right.
Okay. So it's, it's an agreement that's already been?
It's not recorded, but it's been an agreement that, um, ownership has worked with. Obviously we don't want to enter into an recorded document until we have an entitlement.
Of course. But Spur's been welcome to it.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
We think it, we find it mutually beneficial for both.
Right, right. I can imagine that. So I appreciate that very much. Um, okay, thanks Jamie, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I had a question in regards to, kind of back to a question that came up, uh, since we're talking about traffic in general, and maybe this is for the city engineer. Are we gonna be restricting, uh, traffic turns left off Ardmore out onto Union? Especially since we're gonna have large trucks coming in that direction? Will there be anything in that regard?
Hi, good evening, David Athie, city engineer. Um, no, is the, is the quick answer to that.
Okay.
Won't be restricting trucks, uh, if I understand your, your question. Uh, just got some point. Uh, you're talking here.
Yes.
Union in Ardmore?
Yes.
No, he would, that would be still, uh, open for those turning movements.
Okay.
Yeah, if, uh, you know, truckers are pretty smart. They're gonna, they're gonna know their way before they get here and their way back out. Uh, but in the case there is a wayward trucker, they could come this way and make a full turn and come out. Uh, the roundabout itself can pass, uh, I think it's a hundred and, hundred, I would say 10 foot vehicle, cause I can't remember exact length, but it's one of the oversized little boy haulers, um, that David Spur has, uh, went through there.
What about the width down there at Ardmore and Union? I guess, um, I love your optimism about truckers and I, I share your optimism, uh, in hopes that people would be that smart about it. What I'm thinking is if, if there was traffic that needed to go left, regular traffic and there's a truck there that can't go right, I'm just thinking in general, do you think it's wide enough to maybe fit both in there and kind of make traffic flow a little bit smoother? I don't think that many people will be using Ardmore as a cutoff so much anymore, but it was just a thought and I just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Um, I'm not sure I understand your question. So a truck is trying to go, uh, east or westbound on a Union?
If there's a truck that's there and he wants to go left and the regular traffic is trying to go right, can you, you think you're gonna squeeze a car by there? I don't remember what the width of that would be.
No.
Probably not.
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Um, all right. Thank you, I appreciate that, David.
You bet. I have answered for the other question, I think it was item eight.
Oh yeah, go ahead through that, yeah.
So, um, really that would be dependent upon the applicant to decide what split they want to, uh, create for the shared access maintenance, uh, in those, of those facilities of the parking areas. Uh, we just want to make sure that there is some type of agreement that for access and for some type of maintenance and that that's recorded prior to project forward to map, uh, for. So we'll leave that up to them. We really, I don't really, I'm not really an expert in that. I don't know their economics of their site, uh, but I have to trust whatever they set up. We just want to make sure there's something in place so that later on, when the, when the feud erupts, one parcel gets sold to somebody else, that, you know, they can sell, they can settle that themselves.
And you're referring to the shared road? Private road?
Correct.
Okay.
Item, I'm sorry, I wasn't very descriptive on that.
That's okay, no.
It was item number eight, I think on page 52 of the staff report.
Right.
Um, and that's, you know, why we get those is because when you have these shared type developments, uh, it's always the feud over access parking, you know, who's maintaining it, who gets to use it. So having that settled beforehand when there's one owner, uh, is the, just the apps, the only way to go in this case. So that's why we require that.
I appreciate that. That kind of leads to my next question for maybe the applicant. Um, thanks, thanks David. In regards to, we, we talked about the motorcycle, uh, parking spaces and I know that they're gonna be part of phase one. They look like they're clumped together in one area and I may be mistaken in that. So if applicant might be able to determine where those are, my concern would be that if we have three separate parcels, but yet the parking satisf- satisf-, you know, being satisfied is on one parcel. So I'm hoping maybe you could clarify to me where those are and maybe clarify just the thoughts, those are my thoughts exactly. What, what is the plan if the parcels are separately owned for determining the shared access to parking if my motorcycle parking is over on one parcel to satisfy any demands for, um, what I might be required for my business to go in on the other parcel? Maybe you can kind of help us with that a little bit?
I'll do my best and this is, um, and I'll say my, a normal, um, setup would be that there would be the reciprocal ingress, egress and parking easements across the entire site. Or I would say for, for instance, parcel A and B that you see, so you would have reciprocal parking. So that means that if you're a customer here in this building and the parking in front of the building is taken up, you still can go park over here. So parking isn't going to be designated per building. It's gonna be shared amongst all the uses. And it's same with, and I can speak from experience where my commercial building is, we have several buildings and we have an association and we have monthly dues and those monthly dues are allocated and managed for things like parking, you know, repaving the parking lot or fixing the irrigation, we just did that today, or any other common site improvements that need to be cooperatively and collectively managed. Those are all gonna be handled, uh, through the normal process of, of monthly dues.
Okay. So I envision probably a shared maintenance agreement for those types of things, roads, parking. Great.
Yeah.
I, I met, I imagine that's what you were anticipating, but I figured I'd ask for clarity on that.
You know, when I say if there were six owners, you know, we're right now, you see, we only have a two lot parcel map.
Right, right.
If there were six owners, I would probably see an owners association going into effect, but since there's only two owners, um, then there's the opportunity to do it through a much simplified maintenance agreement.
Of course, I would agree. Okay, thanks. Thanks Jamie, I really appreciate that. Onto my next question. Darren, if, I know there's been a lot of questions about the traffic mitigation in the report here, maybe if you can kind of clarify for us, is there any traffic mitigation that were required that maybe you can expound on to any extent so we can clarify the, the misnomer of what's in here in comparison to what is required for the, for the project? And you don't have to get into detail, maybe just summarize, because there seems to be a lot of misunderstanding about what's actually on page eight and nine. So I think if you go to the resolution and the specific conditions of approval, you'll see there are no traffic mitigations. So the mitigated negative declaration for the project along with the traffic analysis, um, related to, um, traffic impacts and vehicle miles traveled was that there, this project would not have an impact and didn't require mitigation measures. I apologize for the confusion in the staff report. There's a few sentences in there that got carried over from the previous project where, um, they had to do some different things related to traffic impacts. No, I appreciate that. I, I think that helps everybody with some clarification from my fellow commissioners and myself as well. Um, okay, so let's see, I had one other question for, just care of that. Um, okay. I, I think this might be my last question for the applicant, just for clarification. In, in, in looking at the overall project, it's a very nicely designed project, I'll say that, and I'm not trying to get into comment section here, but one of my questions was for applicant, if you can help me envision where you see and how you would see handling the retail aspect of say outdoor seating, um, employee spaces to where they can go and have a break, anything like that that I'm missing here through this project? Maybe you can expound on that and kind of enlighten us on to what your vision is for that.
Sure. So the retail perspective, I would say that it would be, uh, typically limited to a-
And I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself? I apologize.
My name is Damian Mavis with-
Thank you, just cause I forgot, so I apologize.
One of the applicants. Uh, but the, the retail would be, if you see the, uh, the hatched areas on building three and, um, uh, building three and building five, surrounded, or surrounding this oak tree in this sort of open plaza, I would see that, that would be kind of the main area where people could, could congregate. Um, obviously building two being right on the corner, uh, could see a little more retail use, but when we say retail, I mean more of a service, commercial, like, I mean, it could potentially be, uh, you know, plumbing supply house type of situation. And these buildings like building three, where it might have storefronts up front, uh, they would have rear loading access. So you could have say a cabinet shop that would have a showroom in the front and that they assemble the cabinets in the back, um, or say a winery that might have a tasting room in the front and they're actually making their wine in the back. So it still would remain, uh, flex style light industrial use.
Okay. How about employee break areas, anything like that? You look like you've got several large buildings. I'm imagining that there'll be some employees there and quite a few of those.
Right. So, so for buildings two through six, I mean, it would be the same area, it would, you know, be here, um, here outside of this, uh, the, the fence. Um, and then, uh, with, uh, building one, you know, there's, uh, some areas, uh, in front of the office areas, uh, so that would be kind of the areas it would be for outdoor employees, which is consistent with these kind of larger format buildings.
Okay. Uh, I don't have any other questions right now. Thank you, Damian. Um, do any commissioners have follow-up questions? Commissioner Cobal Rubius? Do any commissioners have follow-up questions? Commissioner Kovrivius?
Darren, I got a question, just to follow up. Looking at this map, so I understand there's a parcel A and there's a parcel B, two separate APNs. My question is if the parking for parcel A, specific to the motorcycle parking, not trying to beat this to a dead horse, is all on parcel A and parcel B, for some reason down the road gets sold, because it could technically, it's two separate parcels. How does that affect that person, the purchaser's parking situation there?
That's where that reciprocal parking and access agreement recorded over both lots is required prior to recording the subdivision. So that, as Ms. Jones indicated, if you come into this complex, anyone can park in any of the spaces and walk to the other buildings. So that's what that reciprocal parking and access.
And so that's automatically grandfathered into this project?
It's not a grandfather in, it's a, it's a, it's basically a reciprocal easement.
Easement?
Over the properties.
Six and building three, you have service loading areas, which there's, looks like a depicted semi truck going through there. But during your presentation, you said there will not be circulation of trucks on that side. So if you have a business in here that gets deliveries with semi trucks, you know, right there next to building three, I'm not sure exactly how they're going to slide in there. So how are you going to accommodate any business that may receive? Because I've worked for small businesses that stuff showed up on semi trucks, you know? So it, it seems pretty like it's going to happen, like you're going to get bigger trucks through those areas, right? Because they said that the, they show it in here, but they said that was for the ladder truck, not for semi trucks. That's, from my understanding, that's what you said. So is there any plan for any larger trucks to go on to the north side of this project?
Yes, this is Damian Mavis, the applicant. Building six has a, a loading dock. Building three are at grade roll outdoors. So what we would envision from delivery trucks is being smaller delivery trucks, box trucks, et cetera.
But what would happen if one of these businesses needed to receive something with a larger truck, which could absolutely happen? What would you do to stop it or how would you manage that?
I mean, there would be signage for trucks, you know, maximum truck sizes at the entries, you know? Because even, you know, some like, you know, they can have longer trucks with, you know, sleeper areas, et cetera, et cetera, that, you know, sometimes wouldn't fit in other situations. So there would be, you know, maximum truck size signage at the entrances.
So I guess you would just have to have an agreement with the tenants to that, hey, these are the max trucks you can get. So if you have people bringing stuff to you, you wouldn't be able to get it here necessarily. Because like I said, I've worked for a really small business and we've had full-size semi trucks have to back into a tiny parking lot and it can get pretty, pretty hairy. So.
Right. And I, I agree. And I mean, you see those truck drivers back their truck into some pretty thin areas. So, yeah, I mean, this, the Paso Robles ladder truck template fits. Shorter box trucks, box trucks would fit. Full-size semis would probably fit in certain areas and may not fit in others. But we would have signage that would, you know, show maximum truck length.
Sure. And I know people get creative and I, just something to think about. Overall, I think everything's really well done and to echo the other commissioners, I think it was a great presentation. I think overall you guys did a really good job. So just something to, to keep in mind.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Follow-up question. Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, I forgot to ask my question of the architect. So Rebecca, can I ask you a quick question? On one of your slides, you showed, and this is an easy question, I think. I just wanted to know if there was more of that. You showed the black storefront and that was, was that for the big, where, what building was that that had showed the storefront?
The, the black storefront would be for typical across all the buildings where they have the retail entries.
There was a graphic that showed some stone or masonry accent around it. Is that kind of the architectural feel or was that only in one place?
So that was, I believe what you're referencing is the material plan. And that was, the picture was supposed to be, you know, just at the storefront, but that particular example had the masonry. We don't have any planned masonry.
You don't have any? Oh, correct. Darn. I really like masonry. Okay. I thought that was a simple question. Okay.
All right. I do have one follow-up question and I'll start with Darren. Darren, on the, you posted earlier the staff's recommendations, which had some added items. Could I, could you post that again for me, please?
Sure. I was gonna recap kind of what we've been talking about here.
Yeah, thank you.
So option one is for a recommendation of the city council, the draft resolution A. And that would be with the added greenhouse gas mitigation measure, which would be added to site-specific condition. It would, if you look at what we'd be adding that to is exhibit A, site-specific conditions, the mitigation measures are listed there.
Okay. So, so is, is that, is that in, and you can, my question kind of has to do with that. Is that in, in reference to the, the letter received?
Correct.
And the addendum? So then before we go from there, just clarifying, the applicant agrees with adding that as the resolution recommendation? That, that, okay. The applicant's okay with that? I wanted to clarify before we added it.
So, so what you're seeing here is the, what you're seeing here is the requested options. Those bullet points are the, the options that the APCD suggested be looked at. The highlighted one is what the applicants are choosing, which is the applicant commit to the project receiving power from Central Coast Community Energy. So we're going to add that mitigation measure to the exhibit A as a new mitigation measure for the GH, the greenhouse gas. So we'll add that to the end of the mitigation measures.
I think my, and I appreciate you clarifying that. I think my biggest question was whether the applicant wanted that. I'd like to know before we actually add that and, you know, make that as part of a recommendation or an option.
Jamie Jones, Kirk Consulting.
Thank you.
So I think when we were working with staff, after we received the, the letter from APCD, the, the question was, are you okay with all the, the conditions that are suggested by APCD? Right? So that was, that was the first question and, and we looked at them and I'm like, well, because the comment letter came late and we weren't able to say, well, what, what it costs to do adequate electrical panel capacity? We didn't understand what the dollar implications were for the, the item number two and three up there. And so when we were looking at, you know, trying to, to find common ground and look at, and being responsive to the request from APCD, you know, we, we picked the lesser of three, I don't want to say three EVs, but the, the, the measure that we could quantify is having, is doable with the least amount of additional financial impact on the project. And then that aligned with, if we connected to, and I'm probably gonna get, get a little bit in the weeds here, but if, if we did receive power from the, the 3CE, then that, that, that based on APCD's Calimod calculations, that did provide a significant reduction and to, for the greenhouse gas emissions for the project at the end of the day. So in speaking with Damian and Michael, we're, in a perfect world, no, we, we wouldn't do any of them. But we did feel that, looking at the three, three options provided, that that was one that we could incorporate.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. So I'm taking that as you guys are okay with us adding it as a recommendation? Or would you rather see it as an option? We can have that discussion, I would imagine, here before we make a recommendation to the council. So.
That would be great. I, I appreciate the commission's input on it.
Thank you. Okay. Appreciate that. Go ahead, Warren.
Public comment.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Appreciate it. Okay. So we're going to move on with public comment. Is anyone in the chamber tonight that would like to speak? Seeing none, I will move on to the phone line or online.
There's no callers.
No callers. Okay. So we will close public comment and move on to commissioners' comments. And let's start with Commissioner Conley.
Well, I do have a question.
Correct. This is the, what the Air Pollution Control District indicated would be best for this condition to be applied or this mitigation measure to be applied.
And is that because it, it reduces gas emissions below the six ninety, just that one measure?
Correct. So it, I don't know the specific numbers in my head, but it reduces it below the threshold that would require additional mitigation. So.
So the, the condition is the first bullet and that is sufficient to meet the requested below six ninety metric tons of CO2 per year?
That's what we would recommend to council. We can clarify and, and work with the applicant on the specific and complying with that as we prepare for council. But just for the information of the planning commission was to address the Air Pollution Control District letter that we got today was that if we work with this and choose this option of using 3CE would satisfy that.
So have, have, have you gone back to the Air Pollution Control District and say, with regard to your proposed following mitigation measures, being plural, that one of them would satisfy it and they would agree with that? Or is it that they would want all three?
That is something that we can do as we go to council is confirm with the APCD. Like I said, we just, we got their letter the day of the hearing. We, they're offering up some options. The applicants have had other projects where they've had similar requirements. So they're comfortable with knowing more of actually the detail and they've worked with their air quality consultant because they had an air quality study done, an air quality consultant, which has looked at this. So I don't know specifically that meeting this bullet point is going to satisfy everything the Air Pollution Control District needs, but I know that we can work with what their letter indicated with the applicant and we can get it correct and the necessary information as we move to council. But I think if the planning commission allows staff and the applicant to work with what the Air Pollution Control District is recommending, we can provide that information to council. We know that there's a solution and the applicants are comfortable with one of the solutions.
So with regard to the last bullet, I noticed there's ten parking spaces being provided for EV. Are those not capable when they're, when they, when they, there, there's occupancy, they're not capable yet? Is that the concern that they, they be EV capable on, upon occupancy?
We can definitely explore to see if what's being proposed may already utilize what's being suggested. We just didn't have time to go through each of one and see what it would mean to the project and the cost of the project.
Okay. Okay. Because your, your, your recommendation is to add the comment with added GHC mitigation measure. And so you're saying that it might be more than one measure? It might be measures instead of measure?
We can write measure or measures as, as would satisfy the Air Pollution Control District comment. We'll, we'll put something in there.
Staff is saying that he understands that we may want to change that to allow it so that staff could work with the applicant to come up with a measure that would satisfy that.
Okay. I'm, I'm just trying to clarify whether it's definitely just one or is the other ones possibly needed in order to satisfy APCD? That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other comments?
No, that's it.
Commissioner Davis?
I, I just feel that for the applicant that they have to do this on a last minute basis. I feel comfortable letting staff work and meeting a minimum requirement and they're saying what they would do. So it's unfortunate, but I'm comfortable with letting staff come to that, taking it forward to council. And I, I do want to compliment the applicant. I, I really like the flexibility that's built in, into this project. I think there's a lot of thought put into it, your presentation script.
Commissioner Marlowe?
Looks good to me.
Commissioner Kovrivius?
The way I understood it is they just had to select one measure. I mean, I'm not trying to oversimplify it, but that's how I understood it. That's how I read it. So is that your understanding in a nutshell? Here, here are the options. Pick one. Am I oversimplifying it?
That's the understanding. That's the applicant's understanding, but we'll, we'll review it, confirm it. We can even check in with the Air Pollution Control District and let them know that we've looked into it.
So with that comment, then if we look at our options under draft resolution A, so leaving the added comment with added GHC mitigation measure, you feel that is appropriate? I'm comfortable with that. Staff's comfortable with leaving it as is?
You can put measure or measures. We'll, we'll figure it out and.
Okay. And then under, under proposed draft resolution B, if I understood also, I took a note here that we need to add a conditional use permit. Is that accurate? And conditional use permit, is that what you had mentioned earlier?
No, I think the, the resolution's good. It's just the staff report didn't have conditional use.
So as it's written, it's good?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. I'm prepared to make a motion.
Sorry.
So we've talked about a few things tonight on added conditions. So when we look at the options, option one, draft resolution A is a mitigated negative declaration. So the actual change is going to be draft resolution B and the site-specific conditions. Because the mitigation measures are included in there and their request would be to add the mitigation measure related to the greenhouse gas letter provided by the APCD and for staff to work with the applicant to provide a mitigation measure or measures that would satisfy that letter. So that's one. The other was there was some dust control conditions. So if we're looking at, and you may want to go to, it's exhibit A, conditions of, site-specific conditions of approval. We're going to add a condition twenty. These are the end of the planning commission, or the planning department conditions. And condition number twenty is going to list the dust control measures in the air pollution.
Can you reiterate where that's at again, Darren? Sorry. Make sure we're all in. Thank you.
It's site-specific conditions, exhibit A. I don't have the full document up. I don't know the exact page number.
Okay. Okay. Apologize. Thank you.
So that would be a condition twenty to add the dust control conditions. And if we go back to condition number eight, that's the oak tree where it talks about sixty-seven point five inches. So it says, condition number eight, OTR twenty-three eleven shall require the onsite planning of sixty-five and a half inches in diameter of replacement trees. Or thirty-four, if we cross thirty-four and put forty-five, forty-five is the number of one and a half inch caliper replacement trees. So forty-five times inch and a half is sixty-seven and a half. And there was a clarification there. There was a conflicting because there was, somewhere else was a two-inch diameter thirty-four tree. else was a 2-inch diameter 34 tree. So this condition of approval will be the specific. So if we cross out 34 and put 45, that would then read the 45 1-inch, 1.5-inch caliper replacements. And then all effort shall be made to plant the 45 replacement oak trees on the project site. In the event that the project arborist finds that there is not room to plant all of the trees on the site in a manner that would allow the trees to strive, payments per tree can be made to the city's oak replacement fund in the amount of 200 per tree. So the intent is that we're going to get as many as we can that are possible in a manner that they, was best for those replacement trees. And then the rest would have to be paid in new fees to the city's replacement fund.
What number was that again? Well, that was number eight? Thank you.
Condition number eight.
Yeah. Thank you.
And those were the changes to this document that should be included in the motion.
Okay.
So that would be, you could, you can read through recommendation to city council, option one, A, we're still going to add a GHG mitigation measure. Option B is going to be the draft resolution with the changes to Exhibit A, specific conditions of approval related to the dust control measures, the clarifications on the oak mitigation condition, and then the addition of that GHG mitigation measure. Those are the three changes being proposed. And then draft resolutions, resolution C is the tentative track map, which we're not needing any changes to.
Okay. Thank you, Darren. I appreciate the clarification. I did have a couple comments before we, I know you want to make a motion.
Nope, you're good.
I just wanted to make a comment. I love the project as well. I think it's a really nice design project. I look forward to it satisfying some of our C3 and light industrial need in this town, which I've been an advocate for, for a long time. I do, only thing I could say is that I wish that you guys could figure out a way to incorporate a little bit more of outdoor seating area for some of those businesses and/or employees, something that's a little more substantial, you know. And, and just forward thought, I think it would serve you guys well to have that type of aspect to it, especially since it's kind of, you guys are envisioning a little bit of a destination. I know maybe not right out of the gate, but I could see that really happening, especially for surrounding areas. So that's just a comment I wanted to make in that regard. Otherwise, I do like the project and I appreciate the presentation is very good. So the other comment I have is I do believe that, I, I'm glad that we're making the change for the GHG measure. I think that you guys should be able to work that out. The applicant should have the choice to discuss that, how, if they're going to satisfy that and how they would go about doing that. So I'm, I'm good with that. Any other follow-up comments from my fellow commissioners, or does someone want to make a motion? I believe we'll start with that.
Chairperson Christensen, would you like these motions one at a time? How would you like it, staff?
Yes, please.
You got three separate motions, please.
Separate motions. Okay, let's start with the first one. I propose that we approve draft resolution A recommending the city council adopt the proposed mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan with added GHG mitigation measure. Did I get that right, Darren?
Second. Okay, we have a roll call.
Commissioner Covarubias?
Aye.
Commissioner Marlowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Chairperson Christensen?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Do I hear a motion for draft resolution B?
I'll make a move. I move that we approve draft resolution B recommending the city council to approve Plan Development 22-20 and Oak Tree Removal Permit 23-11.
Do we want to include the?
Include, to include the dust control provisions as Exhibit A 20 and to modify Exhibit A, condition eight. Is that 45? The 34 to 45?
Correct. 45 1.5-inch diameter trees.
That's my motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's a comment. Do we have to add GHC in that as well?
I believe that was in draft resolution A.
Yes, the first one.
It is draft resolution A. We will add it to, so you can include it with this as well, because we will add it to that Exhibit A.
Okay, so I can read, read the motion again. I recommend that we approve the draft resolution B recommending to the city council approval of Plan Development 22-20 and Oak Tree Removal Permit 23-11 to include the dust control provisions as Exhibit A 20, the tree replacement at third, at 45 instead of 34, and to include the added GHG mitigation measure.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Thank you.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Commissioner Marlowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Covarubias?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Chairperson Christensen?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, do I have a motion for resolution C?
I propose that we approve draft resolution C recommending the city council approve vesting tentative track map PR 22-0054.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Covarubias?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Commissioner Marlowe?
Aye.
Chairperson Christensen?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, applicants. Appreciate that. Discussion items. Do we have any discussion items, Warren?
There are no discussion items.
All right. I move for the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion on the consent calendar, or are there any changes, requests, clarifications?
I move that we accept the September 12, 2023 Planning Commission minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call.
Who is the second?
Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Covarubias?
Aye.
Commissioner Marlowe?
Aye.
Chairperson Christensen?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Moving on to other reports. Ad hoc street.
So we're still waiting for a council agenda opening. We obviously had a lot of changes at the council recently. So as that settles down, hopefully November, we'll be able to get on to a council agenda to present the commission's recommendations on Passeroble Street.
Housing constraint.
So you'll recall that you had a presentation on the zoning code. You've requested to see a couple more of the articles. We're working on that right now. So we're hoping to get those back to you before the end of the year.
And the development review, committee rotation schedule. Do we have any changes to that at this time? No? Well, accept it as is. Any planning commissioners' comments? Commissioner Marlowe?
No comments.
Commissioner Covarubias?
Lot of work, Darren. Good job. Good job.
Thank you.
Commissioner Conley?
No comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
No comments. Thank you.
And I just have one comment, and I brought it up with Marcy. I love these, but I think we, there, some of this writing on this was really small. This was a, a notice I received in regards to the, the city council considering the general plan amendment rezone process. My only comment would be that maybe we try and figure a way to make the website more prominent on there so that it's much easier to access. I know you have the QR code on front, but for old people like me, we don't use it that often, so. We're old school. Other than that, I want to thank Darren. That was a, a big project. We appreciate the, the presentation and staff for all your help. So moving on to staff comments.
Yeah, so at the last council meeting, the city council did appoint a new council member to District One. That was a district vacated by commission, or council member Hammond when he assumed the mayor's position. So Sharon Roden is our new District One council member. So last week was her first meeting. So we now have a full council. Now that we have a full council, one of the items the council has been looking forward to reviewing is the recommendation from the Housing Constraints Committee on the Uptown Specific Plan Rezoning. That's the idea of extending the Uptown Zone basically to the west, kind of from Vine Street over to Chestnut. That's something that's been discussed for a couple years. So we're going to be on the next council agenda. That's what the postcard's for. It's not a decision on it. It's just the question of, does the council even want to initiate the process? We have sent notices to the property owners and the tenants. I think we had about 1,000 postcards go out. So we do expect to get a lot of comments. So the council's going to have the option to either decide to move forward or to leave things as is there. If they decide to move it forward, then we will start meetings with the neighborhood and the planning commission as we go through kind of vetting out what that zone change might look like. So that's the big thing on your next agenda, or on their next agenda.
Okay. I appreciate that. No other staff comments? So do I have a motion to adjourn? Are we adjourned? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Always want to do that.